Alright, we're getting ready to begin.
That's what I said.
Now Ellen knows.
Just do it. Can't hear you.
The Board of the CMR Unified School District is ready to begin their public meeting. Thank you for joining us tonight. We've been in closed sessions since 5:30 dealing with Public Employee Conference with Legal Counsel, Conference with Labor Negotiators, Public Employee Performance Evaluation, and Student Discipline. And now we're in our regular session, and I have no announcements of closed session, but we do have a guest to lead us in the pledge. Salute Dr. Dawson.
Thank you, President Martin. I would like to invite Kimberly Cueva up to the mic. She's a fourth grader at Napomo Elementary, and she's a positive, hardworking, and always helpful to those around her. She embodies a growth mindset. She constantly lifts up others and is a shining light in your classroom and in our school. Kim loves her family, Art, and Taylor Swift. She's a Swiftie. And she is her classroom's number one hype girl and brightens everyone's day. My day's already been brightened by her today with her smile. I'm really happy she's here. And Miss Collins is proud and honored to have her in our classroom, and we're so lucky to have her here as a student representing Napomo Elementary. So Kim, you may now lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
May everyone stand repeat after me. I pledge allegiance to the flag and the United States of America and to a covenant for which she is camp, one nation, under God, in a visible energy and justice for all.
Well done.
Okay, we're gonna start off with our student representatives to the school board from our high schools. And we're gonna start off with Kaylee Susanna from Aurora Brandy High School.
Good evening, everyone. I hope April has been treating you well, and I cannot wait to share with you the exciting events happening at AGHS. First, I'd like to share what our leadership program has been up to. Starting off, four AGHS students recently added, attended, sorry, the Castle Conference in the Southern California. Our ASB Secretary Tiffany Hahn shared with students throughout the state details on our winter spectacular event. At the end of the conference, we are recognized as one of the 44 schools who have earned the Outstanding Leadership Program Award. The Car and Bike Show is happening this Friday during lunch. We currently have 32 participants that have signed up to showcase their car. There are categories such as vintage, soccer mom, trucks, and even scooter and skateboards that kids can put their vehicles in to showcase. Greek Week prep is up and coming. Drew Tompkins, our tech commissioner, has been working really hard making amazing Greek Week videos to get the kids excited. Greek Week is happening the week of May 20th, so we encourage you to stop by at lunch during Greek Week to experience a classic AG tradition. Prom is happening this weekend on Saturday starting at 7:00 to 10:00. It's being held at Madonna and Expo Center, and the theme is Garden Gala. We are providing a fully stocked candy bar, water station, a photo op, and outside entertainment including fire pits, sorry, cornhole, and food trucks. We are very excited to see all our hard work come together, and we can't wait to see our peers enjoy prom. We are now preparing middle school tours starting next week with Paulding. Next Friday, Linker will be hosting their annual Senior Signing Day event, where seniors share their peers, share with their peers their future plans, wherever they'll be heading to college, enlisting in military, or enrolling in vocational or technical school. And seniors will receive balloons and pennants and cupcakes at this event. Next, I'd like to share updates with you on our clubs and programs. Our Eagle Robotics team finished up their season by winning the gracious professional award at their last competition of the season in Las Vegas. They are now settling down for the season or preparing for next year's team. Avid juniors and freshmen recently went on separate college tours, while seniors have been busy receiving acceptances to colleges of their choice. And all of our avid seniors, they have a 100% acceptance rate to college. Thirty-five percent of seniors, I'm sorry, 35 students are heading to a four-year, and 15 kids are attending a community college. Ms. Worville personally wants to thank you guys and the district for constant support of the AGHS Avid program. Our Hangout Club is hosting an inclusive week next week at lunchtime with activities. This event is intended to encourage all neurotypical and neurodiverse students to interact. And we are excited to announce that our Count Club is back to competing against other schools after a four-year hiatus. It will be competing in Bakersfield tomorrow for a competition, where they're gonna be taking a practice AP test and will be going against schools all over California. Now into academics. New Enrollment Anatomy is headed to the Acute Rehab Center this Friday for a field trip to continue their knowledge about anatomy. Last week, our seniors received their caps and gowns and listened to all the amazing events planned for them as they head into the last month of school. Yesterday, our counseling department presented to 75 seniors local scholarships. This money will help fund seniors' future plans. And today, we hosted a ribbon cutting for our amazing new culinary arts. Our Public Safety and Patient Care CTE Program is hosting next week their Field Day. At lunch, students will be able to walk around the backfield and look at all the different medical CTE jobs. Down to the arts. Earlier this month, our thespian troupe traveled to the thespian festival at the Upland High School. Students competed in different categories such as solos, musicals, and acting, and 14 of our students received superior scores in their pieces. Our improv team is hosting their annual alumni show this Friday. There'll be eight or nine alumni performing alongside the current team. Currently, our drama department is preparing for the Spring Musical. It is on May 23rd through May 25th on the main stage in the Clark Center, and they're performing four shows of Hello Dolly. Our dance company has been very busy performing locally at middle schools, and next week presents their dance movement show at the Clark Center on the main stage. Today, we showcased over 100 entries of our annual Post-it art show. This event allows students to share their interests and artistic skills on a three-by-three inch post-its. Finally, in athletics, we are headed into league finals for many sports this week, our swim and dive particularly, and we are hosting league finals today and on Saturday. Our track and field team hosted their county meet this weekend, where both the boy varsity and the boys' fresh-off team won league. We are excited to share with you that our girls' four-by-four hundred team is closing in on setting a new school record, and this record was previously set in 1984. Lastly, a live streaming setup is set up for most sports on campus, including the football stadium, the gym, baseball and softball fields, and the pool. And that's it for today. I'm so thankful that you guys are allowing me to speak, and we'll have one more time next month. I'm so excited. Thank you.
Thank you. Savannah from Napomo High School, please.
Good evening, everybody. So we've had an exciting month at Napomo High School. Today, we celebrated Mr. Andy Blair for achieving Teacher of the Year at NHS. We're incredibly proud of Mr. Blair and deeply appreciate everything he does for our school and our students. Our ASB class is teaming up with the Cornhole Club to organize an intermural cornhole tournament during lunch. Also, our ASB class received the Outstanding Leadership Award from the California Association of Student Leaders, also known as Castle. Eight of our ASB students attended the Castle Conference in Ontario, California last weekend, and where they acquired and owned new leadership skills. Our ASB applications and interviews for next year's ASB class are complete, and the campaign for elected positions begins next week. This marks our first election in several years, and we're very excited about it. On May 4th, our ASB will roll out the red carpet for prom themed "The Gala of Stars and Elegant," our take on an Academy Award show. Our largest club on campus, FFA, will hold its April meeting tomorrow in the Forum. At the Clark Center on April 7th, we celebrated eight outstanding Napomo FFA members who received their state degrees and proficiency awards. These students were recognized onstage for their exemplary work and dedication to their SAEs and other FFA activities. Congratulations to Melissa, McKenna, Kaitlin, Chad, Jake, Ben, Quinn, and Dylan. Last Friday, two of our members competed in the state speaking finals in Fresno, California. Ms. Malia Eown placed fifth in state for Creed, and Ms. Nola Zavala was an impromptu finalist. We're incredibly proud of our Titans. This week marks the final week of our cast testing for our juniors. We introduced several exciting incentives to encourage them to do their best, and we're very proud of their performance so far. We have a couple senior nights coming up for our boys' volleyball team, baseball, and our softball team, and we're thrilled to celebrate our seniors. Next month, 90 seniors will have the opportunity to go to California Adventure for Grad Night, followed by our annual senior send-off rally to celebrate the entire class of 2024. That's all the news I have for April. Once again, thank you for all your time and support.
And Savannah, I did want to notice that your Titan pride in your Titan red shirt was well done, well done. Alexi from Lopez. Is Alexi here? Hi, Alexi.
Evening, Board and attendees. Thanks for the opportunity to share with you news and events from Lopez and Pacific View. This month, consumer mass students are competing in a virtual stock market project now through the end of May to see who can invest most wisely. Students are eagerly watching their investments to out the other investors. Winners will receive prizes including LHS Lobo swag. SCL groups are now at maximum capacity. With Ms. Davis, students are learning and applying social-emotional learning tools to help improve their lives. This school year has seen 42% growth in student participation. To support our SCL programs, Ms. Davis submitted a grant application to the county's preventative health programs. We are hopeful to receive this fund. Lopez's science teacher, Ms. Williams, thought ahead and ordered a set of eclipse glasses so her science class could witness the recent solar eclipse. The glasses were also made available during our conferencing break so anyone could view this peculiar event. I myself got to. Ms. Mosman provided glasses at PVA. Multiple students, as well as some parents, joined her and Principal Bowen for partial eclipse viewing. Guest speaker from Tobacco Use and Perfection Education, Katie Kleinsman, spoke to a group of Lopez students about dangers of vaping and cannabis use, youth brain development. In a small group setting, students learned and discussed the harmful effects of soci- harmful effects sociologically, emotionally, physically, and psychologically. Last Thursday, Lopez took a group of students on a field trip to the Corizo Plain National Monument for a docent-led tour of Painted Rock. They learned about the sacred images et onto the sandstone formation by the native people living there centuries ago, even to this day. Students also enjoyed picnicking and seeing the annual wildflower super bloom throughout the Corizo Plain. PVA is hosting secondary students in person this week and next complete their science, math, and English state testing. Lopez students will test in May. Lopez Adult Education and Pacific View Academy all have WASC reviews this week. There's been insightful reflective work getting ready for our WASC accreditation day in adult education and the six-year mid-visit for Lopez. We are excited to share out only progress all three schools have made. Our recent Lopez Community Day went well. Timed it right, beat the rain, and the weather was beautiful. Students and staff participated in a variety of outdoor activities, including a race where they tried to balance a plastic egg on a spoon. A special lunch was Chinese cuisine provided by Food Serve. Looking forward, we'll be going back. On Thursday, our Lopez Spirit Day is a retro theme where students and staff will dress in attire from the 60s, 70s, or 90s. That's it for Lopez and PVA. Thank you all for your support.
And someone new from Central Cosne Tech High School, Elizabeth.
Hello, everyone. Unfortunately, Katie Slocum was not able to be here to present our report tonight. My name is Elizabeth Moore, and I hold our ASB Board position of reporter. So I run our student newsletter and help spread information about our upcoming events to our student body. I'm so excited to be able to give you updates on our school activities from the past month and insight into all of the events that we have planned. Now, starting off with our school culture. In March, we held our annual Spring Feast and Spring Spirit Week to allow our students and staff to recharge, rejuvenate, and celebrate all of their hard work. Our advisories competed against each other to have the greatest number of steps per day, and the winning advisory got to eat first at the Spring Feast buffet. Next, the Science Department held a Space Day on the eclipse to show students how to safely view the eclipse and learn more about space through activities, art, and informational videos. Additionally, ASB is running an exciting dodgeball tournament, giving out student recognition awards, holding a movie night, and an academic honors breakfast. Our ASB elections happened yesterday, and we are excited for our Board for the next 2024-2025 school year. Our ASB president-elect will be introduced next month. Our next large event will be prom on May 18th, and the theme will be a royal evening. We will also have a spirit week leading up to prom so our whole school can celebrate. After prom, we will start holding our senior events, which include Senior Week, Grad Night, and Senior Sunset. For academics, our ninth graders and 10th graders just completed one of the largest projects that they will do in their four years called Night at the New Tech Museum. The ninth graders learned about World War I, and the 10th graders studied the decades of the 20th century. Groups of students created interactive exhibits to teach the public about these events. The event night was wildly successful, and our students presented their work to hundreds of community members. This month, our juniors are starting their Shark Team project, where they will create a 90-second pitch for a product or service of their creation and a business plan to a panel of entrepreneurs. This is one of the juniors' favorite projects, and I can't wait to see the amazing ideas that they come up with. Lastly, our seniors are working on filling out their scholarships and committing to colleges nationwide. Seniors in advanced physics also just finished building roller coasters to study centripetal acceleration and are now working on developing model rockets. Now on to athletics, bands, theater, and clubs. So many CCNTH students are participating in spring sports with Napomo High School, and we are continuing to cheer them on at their games, matches, and meets. For theater, our students performed in Napomo's Zombie Prom on March 22nd and 23rd and are now rehearsing for the play Macbeth. The Hysterical Artists will be hosting their next performance this Thursday, themed murder mystery, and will include teachers from CCNTH and NHS. For clubs, our Garden Club, Leo Club, and NAMI Club have helped fundraisers to raise money for local nonprofits in our community like Treading Water, an organization that pays hospital bills for the families of children in the hospital. As always, I would like to thank my leadership advisors, and thank you so much for listening.
Thank you. Thanks again to the high schools for your representation, and also just having so many great events to keep everyone coming to school every day. Really important to all of us that our kids are coming to school till the very last day of school. So spread that word at school about that. Items of interest from the Board. Anyone like to share from Ms. Santos?
As many of you know, we had our culinary school opening today, the ribbon cutting. This is 17 years of waiting for this to happen. It all started from just a wild idea. Ms. Mayer and I used to belong to a program that was called ROP, and Paso had this school, and I thought, we can do better than them. And it's just like sports, and it's like, let's do it. And so between the team, our Board, and who we work with, with our superintendents and our staff, we're fortunate to have such an outstanding, outstanding building. And if you ever get a chance to, to visit, please do. These kids have done a phenomenal job. I'm so proud of them, and it gives them another career choice. And in this area where we have so many hotels, and we have a lot of wineries and so forth, it gives these kids an opportunity, and if they're not gonna be in this particular type of career, they can work their way through college and help pay for that. So I'm just so proud, and thank you to the district for allowing this to happen. On another note, next week, we're gonna have our CTE showcase in Oceano, and it's another thing where all these different groups put on and show that they've been taught. So I'm so proud of the students that we have produced and given them an opportunity to show what we're about. So hang on, you CMR, we're ready.
Anyone else, Ms. Mayer?
Well, just in case you don't know, tax season ended on April 15th, which is wonderful. I'm very happy. But the month of April is Financial Literacy Month, and I thought this would be a good opportunity to talk about literacy in the financial world. We need that in our schools. There is a ballot initiative at our state level. They're trying to pass some state legislation to add at least one semester to our high schools and potentially add it to graduation requirements. After sitting with the number of people that I did doing taxes this season, it's something that's needed. Our students need this. A lot of our parents aren't aware either, so it's not coming from home like it used to. So I would like to encourage our district to look at this and see what we can add. There's a lot of free materials online available. It could be added to economics class, could be added to a CTE class. It's something we need to look at.
Could be added to a work experience class, something.
Yeah.
Easy, online modules.
I also attended the ribbon cutting for the Culinary Arts Building, and that was really wonderful to see that. And after that, I went to San Luis Obispo and attended a county Board of Supervisors meeting where they're discussing the Dana Reserve project. And some of our students from New Tech, student activists, had a rally going there. And so proud of those kids. They worked really hard, Caesar and Leila, and working to try to convince the Board of Supervisors to save some of the trees that are slated for clearcutting in that project. So it's great to see students out there doing work in the world. And next week, I'll be attending the California Distinguished Schools Awards in Anaheim. Forward to that, honoring AGHS and Paulding.
Well, to wrap it up, I got really exciting things. First, I have the letter from the county as the Board President showing that our collective bargaining for our teachers, that we can afford it, and we're happy to give it, and that we can, that our budget looks good. And then today, I got to talk with the auditors for the district. So I got to do the really fun part of being on the school board today. And our auditors, you know, they don't, they don't approve how we spend our money. They just approve that what we say we spend it on, we really did. So we had a good conversation, and it looks like, once again, Ron DeSiver is gonna lead our team into Olympic medal quality budget and audit. So it all sounded good. And I did go the ribbon cutting, but this was so exciting, that audit conversation. Anything else from the Board? Okay, well, great. Well, we have plenty to talk about tonight, and the superintendent's report is filled with something very exciting.
Yeah, we have a few things that are very exciting tonight in the superintendent's report. And I just want to start off by saying this is the time of year where we celebrate people and celebrate employees, and it's a lot of fun. And tomorrow is a very, very important day. It's Administrative Assistance Day. And we have a wonderful executive administrative assistant here too. So be sure to spoil her rotten. I know I will, and all of our administrative assistants out there. So let's just remember all the great work that they do. And then we are gonna have two more items tonight under my agenda items. So I'm gonna invite up the Rotary of Napomo to the mic, where they're gonna present a $7,000 check, a $7,000 check to our robotics club, and Great Grasha is here to receive it. So the mic is yours, and we are excited to hear from you.
Nice.
Oh, thank you. Thank you. We're the Rotary Club of Napomo. I'm George Dubois, this year's president. In line with your why do we exist up there, we believe in supporting the local schools, local community, and it's really exciting to see what some of these students are doing with the robotics. This year, we're donating $7,000 to upgrade. What we did last year was, I believe it was $3,500? $3,500. We've also with our fundraisers, we gave $10,000 to the Dana Elementary School for their placard.
Oh, wonderful.
Okay, and without further ado, Barry, would you please?
Could you guys introduce yourselves, you Orterians? You look familiar, but I just would love to know who you are.
Barry? Oh, go ahead. You can say it for yourself.
Barry Donahue?
Oh, that's right.
Walter Khan? Grasha?
Great.
All right, so a big round of applause for them, Greg.
No, I think it's Great Grasha's hour.
All right, thank you.
I think you want to take that with you.
Greg, I think you want to take that check over there to Napomo High. Maybe the principal back there could help you out.
This is actually for the elementary and middle school program.
Awesome.
So they're in much need of technological upgrades, their brains and batteries. I raised this.
Well, aren't you smart to feed your program that way? Very smart.
Even though Greg retired, he has stuck around to help make sure these robotics programs continue to run, so.
We appreciate all you do for those kids.
All right, and now I would like to invite up Bonnie Long from the Assistance League, and she's gonna talk about Operation School Bell.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Bonnie Long, President-
Bonnie, get real close to that mic, because we want to hear every word.
Okay. How's that?
Much better.
Okay. Bonnie Long, President of Assistance League of San Luis Obispo County. With me this evening is Chris Pontius, RVP Philanthropic Programs, and Sharon Darnton, our president-elect, to take over. Our primary philanthropic program, Operation School Bell, provides new school-appropriate clothing to kindergarten through 12th grade students in all 10 school districts in our county. We could not do what we do without the support of the district personnel and the superintendent of each of the schools, down to the school secretary. Tonight, we are reporting to you on the students we have clothed at the CMR School District. That number, well, no, excuse me. I'm proceeding too fast here. Countywide, our Assistance League chapter clothed 2,177 students countywide this school year. And statistics prove that when students go to school dressed appropriately, it benefits them positively through school attendance, academic, and social success. We have confirmation of that fact. In March of 2024, this year, our chapter conducted, again, its Measured Outcomes Survey, and all 10 school districts in our county were asked to participate in evaluating our Operation School Bell program. 76% of the students reported getting, having increased student behavior after receiving our school clothes. 89% of the schools reported that student participation in our program had a positive effect on student confidence. 100% of those responding said that our Operation School Bell program served a high priority need in their school. First and foremost, we want those students to succeed academically, but we also want them to have the full benefit- but we also want them to have the full benefit of what their schools offer them. San Luis Obispo County schools have a rich intra- and extracurricular programs, especially at our high schools. Students can participate in athletics, band, choir, drama, the school newspaper, FFA. They can find their niche, making friends, and becoming part of a group on campus. All South County students are met by our volunteers in clothes at Old Navy and San Luis Obispo. With our tax-exempt status, Old Navy and Old Navy discounts, each kindergarten through 5th grade student receives $150 worth of school clothing that they have selected to wear themselves. Each 6th through 12th grade student receives $200 in clothing credit, and they pick the clothes out that they particularly want to wear and that fit them. In addition to the school clothing, we give each student a grade-appropriate new book that they choose to select, a tote filled with school supplies that are grade-appropriate to their school. And then we also give them a dental hygiene kit. So now I'd like to turn it over to Chris, and she's going to tell you about the students we've clothed at the CMR.
As Bonnie said, we clothed 2,177 students countywide. This school year, Assistance League clothed 700 students in your district. The cost of clothing these students was $131,460. By far, the most students clothed and the largest dollar amount spent on any school district in the county. The number of students clothed from each school. Royal Grandi High School, we had 92. Branch Elementary, 16. Dana Elementary School, 57. Central Coast New Tech High School, 14. Fair Grove Elementary School, 30. Grover Beach Elementary School, 64. Grover Heights Elementary, 26. Harlow Elementary School, 41. Judkins Middle School, 38. Orthea Lang Elementary School, 46. Lopez Continuation High School, 9. Mesa Middle School, 50. Nopomo Elementary School, 62. Nopomo High School, 80. Ocean View Elementary School, 3. Oceano Elementary School, 25. Paulding Middle School, 38. And Shell Beach Elementary School, 12. So we clothed all these students in need in 18 different schools in your district. So as a district. As district administrators and boards of trustees change, we believe it's our responsibility to continue to inform you of our efforts in your district. That's our purpose here this evening. I have a letter for Dr. Fawcett and a rack card for each board member. Thank you for letting us speak this evening. Thank you.
Wow, she got me going. I work at San Luis Obispo High School, and I handed out those cards and identified some of those kits that get to go shopping with your organization. The fact that your donation is new, and it's what the kids want and what fits them, that is when you're really giving what is needed. Because we know how picky even the most financially challenged student can be, how picky they can be, and that they won't wear it unless they like it. And so you've really met the need so well by allowing the kids to do their own shopping. Thank you so much. There's no way that we could do what you've done. Oh, for sure. Definitely, definitely. Thank you. Yeah, next year. We won't forget about you. Anything more, Dr. Fawcett?
That concludes my presentation.
Okay. I'm going to go out of order here, but before we approve our consent calendar movement to our action, can I ask you to do one more thing and introduce to people that are on the Personnel Action Items? Can just have me introduce them right now?
You bet. Do you want to do it after you take action, so it's official? Or do you want to do it before?
Just do it now while you're doing it.
Okay, so I think Jennifer Bowen is out in the audience, and Keith Glale is out in the audience.
Please stand.
Please stand. They're both going to be promoted to various principal positions. Jennifer Bowen is going to be the principal of adult education, and Keith's going to step into the role of the principal of ALTE, which covers Lopez High School and PVA. And we're very lucky to have both these leaders in our school district. Let's give them a round of applause.
Thank you again for being here and for being part of Team CMR. Okay. A couple announcements before we get started with our official meeting of the Board of Education, where the Republicans vied to observe and provide comments. Blue and yellow speaker cards are in the back if you'd like to make public comments. Interpreter Elsa Hernandez, wave your hand, Elsa, is in the back too for anyone that could need some assistance. And our decorum policy is on the last pages of our printed agenda where they are stated. Thank you again to our security team that makes us feel safe and allows us to perform our duties here. I'm going to provide guidance about public comment at every single meeting because it's important. As we get closer to the fall, it's going to be more important. Public comments are an opportunity for members of the community to address the board of trustees in the meeting of the school board that is open to the public. Members of the public are encouraged to address the board concerning any item on the agenda or any item of interest within the subject matter jurisdiction of the school board. Public comments are limited to at the most three minutes and no more than 20 minutes per one subject matter, under the discretion of me, the presiding officer. The board will not take any action or have discussion on any item not appearing on the posted agenda, except as authorized by law. This is why the board does not respond during the public comment section of our agenda. It is important to recognize that opinions and comments shared here are those of individual speakers and may not represent the views of our district, the board, or our staff. CMR is committed to fostering an inclusive, welcoming, and safe environment at our meetings and at our schools. We respect everyone's right to express their ideas and opinions. All remarks must be free from personal attacks, particularly those based on legally protected categories such as race, religion, disability, or sexual orientation. Our district is dedicated to serving and nurturing all our students, guiding them to become responsible, ethical, and productive members of society. To honor this mission, please make sure your comments avoid profanity, demonstrate tolerance towards differing viewpoints, and exhibit exemplary conduct. Our students are watching and learning from us at all times. Please be aware that any disturbance or intentional interruption of the meeting is not permissible. In accordance with recently enacted law, excessive disruption by any individual or group will result in the board president revoking the individual or group's privilege to address the board. Disruptive participants may be warned and, if necessary, removed from the meeting. We value your participation in the public meeting of the Board of Education, and thank you for your cooperation in maintaining the efficiency, effectiveness, and stability of the CMR. Thank you. Okay, we're going to move on to the business of the board, and we're going to start with the Consent Calendar Action Items, which is items 1 through 12. Any questions from the board?
Don, I would like to discuss item number five.
Okay. Anything else?
I'd like to discuss item number 12.
Well. Okay. Anything else? No? Is there any public comment on items 1 through 12? Seeing none, I'm going to close it to the audience and bring it back to the board for comments on items 1 through 4 and 5 through 11. Six through 11, excuse me. Seeing none, I'm looking for a motion for 1 through 4 and 6 through 11.
I move approval of Consent Calendar Items 1 through 4 and 6 through 11.
Second? It's been moved by Stuart, second by Santos, to approve items 1 through 4 and 6 through 11. Roll call vote, please. Stuart?
Aye.
Santos?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes.
Naomi Bernier?
Yes.
Candell?
Yes.
Martin? Yes. Motion passes 6-0. Item number five, Approval International Exchange Programs. Ms. Candell, you have some questions or concerns?
I hosted quite a few exchange students over the years. My daughter was an exchange student, and I also worked as a liaison for AFS. So some of these organizations I'm not familiar with. The one for CIEE, the coordinator for that organization is in Ventura. And I'm wondering, the students that I've hosted were usually students who had a failure in their placement. So they came to me after they lived somewhere else and needed to be replaced with a different family. And so I know how important it is to have an accessible coordinator for those kids. And so I guess my question is, have we worked with this organization before? And do we know that even though there's, you know, someone's two hours away, whether those exchange students would really have access to support?
Thank you, Ms. Candell, for your question. Last year, this, excuse me, this current school year is the first year that we've worked with this organization, and we brought this to the board for approval. At this time last year, the local advisor was actually an individual in San Luis Obispo. So when this organization applied again, it appears that something has changed in their, in the local organization portion. And now the individual is listed as living in Ventura, a different person. So that is new information to us at this time. So they're a relatively new organization to the district as well, and this has been a change from this current school year. I don't know the reason for the change.
I will add that this CIEE does place kids at San Luis Obispo High School. We have like 30 for an extension, so we use a lot of. I do agree that someone nearby is a good idea. I don't know if that's worthy of disqualifying them because they might not even place someone here.
That's true.
We're just saying they might.
Well, I guess my request would be to stay on top of this, and if they do place students in, when this comes back around next year, that we make sure that the students are getting the full level of support that.
Thank you, Ms. Candell. We'll keep close track if we have students placed in our district from this organization.
And then number 12, Ms. Naomi Bernier, you had a question?
I do, I do.
Item number 12.
In regards to item number 12, regarding the position as principal alternative and assistant. Principals, so because the laws now are geared around career and location of that nature, do we want to include that on the job? And I'm talking about Education Code 56452, Education.
I would need to look up those ed codes to be more specific, but typically our job descriptions are all encompassing and are written at a high level to allow for the capturing of the leadership of programs that are built into that. So for example, our alternative education principal position supervises Lopez High School as well as Pacific View Academy. And we know that Lopez High School does have programs, such as the one that you referenced, the CTE program of late, a lot of attention has been getting or thrown to the cosmetology program, for example. So the job description as written does make sure to address the leadership of programs within the school that also include those that I believe you referenced. You bet.
Any other questions or concerns about items 5 or 12? I already opened it up to the public for public comments, so I'm looking for a motion. I'll make a motion that we accept item 5 and item 12. Second? Moved by Santos, second by Candell for items 5 and 12. Roll call vote, please. Santos?
Yes.
Candell?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes.
Naomi Bernier?
Yes.
Stuart?
Aye.
Martin? Yes. Item passes 6-0. You're official over there. You're official. Okay, moving on to reports and presentations, resolutions, and proclamations. With the end of breath, I see Nopomo Elementary is here. One of our faves, come on up and give us over your report. And you have your cheering section.
I do. It's my number one fan. Do I just press the button to go?
Yeah, it's ready to rock and roll, so you hit down.
Fantastic. It's an honor to be here this evening to share just a few updates to the amazing things that are happening at Nopomo Elementary. And we're going to take a look at our vision and mission, a brief overview of our newcomer program, just a few Tier 2 highlights that have happened this year, and then instruction by our teachers with our standards matrix and PLC. So two years ago, Nopomo Elementary started their PLC process. They had a mission and a vision and have been growing and aspiring academic achievement. This year, starting fresh with the support and input of parents from ELAC, school site council, student surveys, student feedback, and all staff. Together, we had an amazing opportunity to create our mission and our vision. So it is our mission at Nopomo Elementary School to provide a safe, positive, and encouraging environment where students become lifelong learners, leaders, and responsible citizens, and are inspired to achieve their highest potential in the ever-changing world. Our vision is simply our best by working as a team, and that means together, everyone achieves more. We were fortunate enough in January to become the second newcomer school in CMR, and we welcomed 17 students. We have made a significant push to make sure that those students are being included in breakfast, PE, music, and when they're ready for core subjects. Basic things that students are working on are mastering basic vocabulary, conversation skills, fluency and competency in math, and reading and self-advocacy skills. Some of the data that we've seen out of our students so far with the Newcomer Proficiency Exam is that most students have already grown an average of 16 points since January, and 50% or more students have achieved letter and sound recognition. Our kiddos are moving, and it's fun to watch. This is a video. They're kind of hard to hear, but they're. So they're moving and rocking. One of the highlights that we have on our campus that we've been working hard to continue to build is our two-tier system. Here, we have our counseling campus impact report. So by the numbers, our counselor has made contact with 644 students, 23 of those in small groups, 34 individually with 75 classroom lessons. The outcome data of those numbers are 90% of students shared that they're happy, 80% felt like they could regulate emotions, and 100% could identify three coping tools. And this is tracked by savers that we give twice a school year. After the classroom lessons, there's increased awareness, use of coping skills, and methods of self-care. Those are seen through observations from teachers and conversations with our counselor. And some climate projects that our counselor has done, we had a multicultural week. May is going to be Mental Health Month. We're also going to push Amazing Attendance, which will be a community event to encourage kids to come to school. And just recently, last Friday, we had College and Career Fair at Dana Elementary. Another area of growth that we've seen is our response to intervention, and this is a highlight of Just Math. Forty-eight to 52 students are seen daily, 1 to 14 per group. There are six to eight groups per day, and we are on a focus of 2nd to 6th graders at this time. After classroom lessons and common formative assessments, teachers look at skills, mastery, things that students need, and they're placed into groups with our intervention math teacher. This is a snapshot of 6th grade. They are currently on cycle 9, but this is just the first three cycles that there was a focus on. Um, our math intervention teacher saw groups of eight, nine and ten. Um, we had kiddos super close to meeting standards, just a few needed more time on a specific skill. And we are also serving our tier three students, so they are getting lots of support. The RTI process is a focus of collaboration around common formative assessments, standards and re-taught skills that students need. There's also a significant push in this smaller setting for social emotional support and academic support. Um, with our counselor, we've also had the privilege of having a behavior intervention teacher visit our campus. There have been a total of nineteen referrals, um, to our behavior intervention teacher. And through collaboration, we've had fourteen action plans, five one-to-one supports and eight classroom lessons. Uh, eighty-four percent have shown growth in behavior and a hundred percent of our teachers felt supported. And again, a hundred percent could, of students could identify three coping skills. Um, after the classroom lessons, teachers noticed and through our intervention teacher observations, there was an increase in awareness and self-monitoring behavior, social interactions in the classroom. There were observations of coping skills and common school language across the grade level. Some of the strategies that are currently being used are check-in, checkout, token board system, one-to-one behavior meetings and punch cards. In regards to instruction, Nopomo Elementary is very dedicated to our PLC process. We're dedicated to collaborative culture and sharing across all grade levels. And most importantly, the students are at the center of everything and we're dedicated to meeting the needs of all of our students. Through that process this year, we have been building a standards matrix. What this matrix is, is TK through sixth grade priority standards and Nopomo Elementary essential standards. And they're listed in a document. At the top are the standards that start in the fall and at the bottom are the standards that end in the spring. So it's almost like a backwards map as well. The point of this matrix is that all teachers have all access to dig into skill standards that students may need, whether it be for intervention or whether it be for enrichment to better support our kids. It's through the PLC process with the four essential questions. Um, what are we teaching? How do we know? I'm sorry, I'm totally off on that. What do we want our students to learn? How will we know when they've learned it? What do we do in response if they haven't? And what do we do in response that if they have? So on, the highlighted ones in blue have attached here, we have an unpacked the standards template where teachers are using the four essential questions to drive their instruction. They are planning out. This year, we decided to only go after the highlighted portions. Next year, we're hopeful to dig into a little bit more. All data is linked here, so all teachers, including tier two and tier three teachers, have access to how students are doing. And it's a work of our continuous collaboration to make sure that we're meeting our students where they're at and giving them what they need. With that being said, the focus for next year is a continuation of just a few of the highlighted items this evening. We want to continue to build a robust newcomer program that supports our transitioning learners. We wanted to continue to build up our two-tier responses to intervention and make sure that we're bridging those gaps the best we can. The goal is to complete the essential standards matrix and have data in there to make sure we're driving our instruction according to common formative assessment data and ensuring that all students are being met where they're at and that they're achieving, um, academ- and we thank you for your continued support.
Does anyone from the board have any questions for Principal Els- Cisando?
Elsando, yeah.
Anyone have questions? I thought your presentation was awesome. I love the targets. Um, it was really, I, I'm a firm believer in the essential standards, so to me, that was really important to see your work there with the, um, with the kids. And as a parent of a newcomer teacher, um, I'm really excited that we're, um, branching off to newcomer programs because I do think you can see amazing growth, um, in one year with our newcomers if they're isolated. And then it really helps our gen ed teachers not feel so overwhelmed in their classrooms when they feel like they're not reaching out to that one or two children that really need that extra support.
What?
Public comment?
Ooh, any public comments on, um, Nopomo Elementary's presentation here tonight? Other than telling them they're wonderful?
Okay, great.
Thank you so much. I wish there was some little guys here that we could.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to item number fourteen, Mr. Eichberger.
Thank you, President Martin. This evening I have a, just a brief oral update related to Measure I. And thanks to the infusion of, uh, some much-needed money, uh, in two thousand sixteen through Measure I, we've had a ton of opportunities to update facilities, add new classrooms, replace portables. So there's a litany of items that Executive Director Stenson has been supporting. The six items today are the significant measures that are currently, I, I like to use the term in the hopper. And, uh, when we look at these six items, Grover Heights, six standard classrooms, one phys- physical education office and one staff restroom. This project actually kicked off in January and is running smoothly. The foundations were poured on April seventeenth. And the goal is to occupy the classrooms either fall or early winter of next school year. For Ocean View, there is two new kindergarten classrooms and four standard classrooms, as well as a new kindergarten playground. Uh, we actually have the bid opening for this later this week. And, uh, we will request the Board of Education to approve that, uh, winning bid on May seventh. If you recall, this project has lingered in DSA for quite some time and it is finally out. Mr. Scoresby made a trip to LA to support the quote stamping out of the project and it will allow us to proceed. Again, excited bid opening next week. Project is slated to kick off during the summer of this year. Holding Middle School, we have the two-story mixed-use building, office and one classroom downstairs, four classrooms upstairs. The project was submitted to DSA on March fifteenth and construction for the temporary office in room thirty-one is underway. Timelines again will be dictated by DSA and the ideal scenario will allow us to begin the main phase of the project in November of twenty-four with, uh, construction window of approximately sixteen months. Uh, this will be an extremely, extremely complicated project, uh, given the small footprint of the site, elevation changes and so forth. So, uh, more to come. Nopomo High School's HVAC replacement project, uh, has, will be the full stick-built replacement for the office, science wings, library, Olympic hall, forum and the gym. This again, uh, Mr. Scorby went two-for-two down in LA and was able to have an in-person back check appointment and was able to get the project stamped out. This project should be ready for bidding soon with an anticipated request to the board, uh, in June. HVAC gear does still have very long lead times, so construction is not likely to begin until mid-fall of twenty-four, twenty-five school year. Just in terms of context, this project, the HVAC portion alone is approximately two-point-three million dollars. And the accompanying fire alarm system is going to be an additional million dollars out of Measure I monies. Shell Beach Elementary, uh, will be receiving two new kindergarten classrooms, four standard classrooms and two staff restrooms. This project is currently in DSA, so again, we are in, at DSA's mercy. The old NPR will be temporary housing for two to three programs during the course of construction. And the project will be centered in the middle of campus, which does add some complications to the project, uh, as well as some very stringent requirements around, uh, safety measures in terms of vehicular traffic and, uh, to and from the site with the students. The auxiliary gym at AG will be two standard basketball courts with a foyer, restroom, two team rooms and storage. Uh, just, this is a general update. If you recall, we did have a donation, uh, that is going to allow us to augment that project for the team rooms and, uh, the project is still in final, uh, design phase. Executive Director Stenson, Mr. Scorby and myself met with representatives from, uh, prominent local Japanese, uh, families. And they have shared an acute interest in the gym. They are in the process of selling a piece of property and wanted to, uh, discuss other potential donation opportunities to possibly augment the outdoor area of the project. And, uh, Executive Director Stenson's looking at some feasibility of outdoor seating and shade structures that could potentially, uh, also make the outside of the building um, a little bit further in terms of presentation than what we would be able to do. So it's exciting. Uh, it's, you know, very in the first blush stages, but, um, Mr. Stenson is working with, uh, architectural company that does the outside seating and, uh, is starting to gather some information of what can be done for various amounts of money. And, uh, last, just side comment, it's not noted here, but we do have, uh, two additional projects that are in DSA. Both Lang and Branch have, uh, construction projects, the two tinder, uh, two kindergarten classrooms for each site are in DSA. They were submitted in September while the, the stamp-out, uh, ETA is unknown. If fortune favors us, uh, it could begin, uh, excavation, the overexcavation over summer. If it doesn't, then, uh, we will have to see what DSA has in store for us. So more information will come for that project as well. And, um, if you have any questions, please feel free to let me know.
Um, Ms. Santos? Does DSA have a special room for us since we're down there so often?
Uh, no, but I think our FMO staff has become very comfortable in lying in wait in the office until the appropriate people come in and then bouncing to get, uh, the meetings that we need for our, our back check appointments.
And the, the group that donated the big money for the basketball courts, are they keeping informed of the happenings?
Uh, yes. In fact, there have been, uh, several meetings to look at the various design-based elements and, uh, what the current layout is in terms of how the team room structure will be, uh, based on the footprint and what the architects feel is going to be our best options.
And that was the five cities men's club? Yes, it was five, six men's. I was just thinking, because we could show you some basketball nets and balls and everything else that goes with it. Question?
Yes, um, thank you. Um, to follow that question, um, in regards to the standard basketball court, adjustable, um?
I would have to do a little bit of research, uh, with Executive Director Stenson. I do know that, uh, a lot of our youth programs and alternative services, when they come in and use what are our regulations, CIF-style courts, they do bring in temporary nets and, uh, backboards that are appropriate for the, the age and/or ability. So, uh, that would definitely be something that we, we could look at as well.
Because I believe in inclusionary opportunity. So if we're looking at high-
Mayor, did you have a question? Anyone else? I have a couple of questions. Uh, first off, the HVAC program at Nopomo, um, we don't know the timing of that. I do want to just put in the back of your mind that some of our warmest weather is in the fall. So I'd hate to deny them of the current HVAC unit to not have AC in those, uh, buildings.
I- if we go back to the beginning of this year, we actually had catastrophic failure of those HVAC systems and brought in temporary units during those hotter times. And if we are not, uh, far along enough in the process, I'm sure you will see some contracts coming forward to the board for approval for, uh, temporary air conditioning systems.
And what is the plan for the old NPR at Shell Beach once the temporary housing is done? Is it going to be removed?
Excellent question. Mr. Stenson, is that going to be demoed or rehabbed?
Sorry, Mr. Stenson.
Yeah, I needed to get up. It's hard to sit there that long. Uh, so our plan is to, is to demolish the building. Um, we are putting in for state match and when we put in for state match, we have to identify what we're demolishing. Um, however, there are programmatic changes that happen over time. There are a lot of, a lot of portables that we thought we were going to demolish a year ago, two years ago, that we've saved for before and after-school programs. Right now, the plan is to demolish it, but when we get to that point, we'll see where we are. Program, 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 problematic, pro- how do you say that? Programatically to see if, if it's viable to, to keep it.
Yeah, I just lost my mind in there. It wasn't very viable.
No, it's, well, we have, we, we, we put a new roof on it two years ago, so it's, it's viable, but, uh, you know, will it last another ten years? Hard to say.
Yeah, all right. Keep us apprised on that.
Thank you.
Anyone else have questions? Anyone from the audience have questions on our report on the Measure I project update? Comments, public comment on Measure I project update? Seeing no one rising, I'm going to close it to the public and bring it back to the board. Say the board have comments on Measure I project updates? No? I'm going to have to do something down there at DSA. Maybe you should take me along next time. All right, we're going to, thank you very much, uh, Mr. Eichberger for informing us about what's all in the hopper. Item number fifteen, approval, adoption of proclamation A twenty-three, twenty-four dash nineteen, recognizing National Teacher Appreciation Week, May sixth through tenth, twenty-twenty-four, and the California Day of the Teacher, May eighth, twenty-twenty-four. Dr. Coste?
Thank you, President Martin. I'm excited to bring this proclamation before you tonight. I'm going to read a few of the whereas statements because I think they capture some of the work our amazing staff do. So whereas teachers work to open students' minds to the magic of ideas, knowledge and dreams and demonstrate their love of learning in the classroom every day. And whereas teachers may fill roles as listeners, learners, role models, motivators and mentors. And whereas the success of students in the Luci Mar Unified School District depends on the skills, knowledge and attitudes acquired while under the nurturing guidance of our dedicated teachers. And whereas teachers work collaboratively with the Board of Education, colleagues, parents and others in support of our commitment to the quality of education for all youngsters. And whereas teachers continue to influence us long after our school days, um, are over and all of our memories. And whereas California teachers have many extraordinary skills that they pull from to reach and teach all of our students. It is full-heartedly that I recommend that the board adopt this proclamation. Thank you.
Any questions for Dr. Coste from the board? Thing done, I'm going to open it up for public comment with the audience. Anyone have public comment about the adoption of proclamation twenty-three, twenty-four, nineteen? Thing done, I'm going to close public comment to the audience, bring it back to the board for public comment. Have to say anything? Well, we all love teachers and we all have teachers in our lives. I'm sure if you ask most of the teachers at Luci Mar, they have a sister, a mother, an aunt, a sister-in-law, someone who's also a teacher in their lives. I know my mother was a teacher. Both my sisters are teachers. My daughter's a teacher. A lot of teachers in my life. Thank you to all the teachers everywhere and especially at Luci Mar. Okay, I need a motion to approve this.
I move approval, adoption of proclamation A dash twenty-three, twenty-four dash nineteen, recognizing National Teacher Appreciation Week from May sixth through May tenth, twenty-twenty-four, and the California Day of the Teacher, May eighth, twenty-twenty-four.
Second? It's been moved by Stuart, second by Kendell to approve item number fifteen. Roll call vote, please.
Stuart?
Hi.
Kendell?
Yes, sir.
Santos? Yes. Mayor?
Yes.
Naomi Bernier? Stuart?
Martin?
Yes. Motion passes six zero, as it should. Item number sixteen, approval, adoption of proclamation A twenty-three, twenty-four- Item number sixteen, approval, adoption of proclamation A twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty, recognizing classified school employee week, May twentieth through twenty-four, two thousand twenty-four. We're happy to see you here. Dr. Fossett.
Thank you, President Martin. And it is nice to see some of our classified employees in the room. Um I'm also going to read um part of this proclamation before you tonight because I think it captures the work that they do too. And so whereas the California State Legislature and the governor recognize the importance of classified school employees to the educational process by approving legislation in nineteen eighty-six, setting aside the third full week in May of each year as Classified Employees Week. Whereas the Board of Education joins the state government officials in acknowledging the important roles classified school employees play in Luciemar Unified School District. And whereas classified school employees contribute immeasurably to the health, safety and well-being of our students through their dedication and professionalism in carrying out the many and varied job responsibilities, assisting children and young people in classrooms and throughout valuable support services across the district. Whereas classified employees endeavor daily in their work to follow this year's theme of classified professionals indispensable, inspiring and invincible. Um a wonderful model or motto um that they're presenting to us this year. And it's fantastic to just think of all the work that they do behind the scenes. We wouldn't be sitting here today having this board meeting in such a nice facility without their um hard work and efforts. So I full-heartedly recommend you approve this proclamation tonight. Thank you.
Any questions from the board for Dr. Fossett on this item? Seeing none, I'm going to open it up for public comment from the audience on adoption of proclamation A twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty, recognizing classified school employee week. Anyone in the audience? Seeing none, I'm going to close it to the audience and bring it back to the board for public com- for comment from the board. I would just like to say if it wasn't for these people, they're a lot of our students' best friends, they're a lot of their parents, they're a lot of their buddies, people who help lead them on the way. You know, they they admire their teachers so much, but these people too are the ones to greet them in the mornings. Say goodbye at night. Anyone else?
I do. Uh will we be recognizing teachers? Um at some point, like some type of celebration?
Yes, we're gonna be um. We will be recognizing them at their sites. Yes. Um as a classified employee myself, I know what classified employees do and we always feel like we're running the wheels of the school. And so I know that's probably how you all feel too. And that um teachers can teach, but there's a lot of classified employees that hold up the table um to get that work done. So thank you very much. And I accept the motion. I move we adopt proclamation A dash twenty-three, twenty-four dash twenty, recognizing classified school employee week, May twentieth through twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-four. Second. It's been moved by Mayor, second by Santos to approve item number sixteen. Roll call vote, please. Mayor?
Yes.
Santos?
Yes.
Naomi Bernier? Stewart?
Aye.
Kendell?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes. Motion passes six, zero. Thank you.
Item number seventeen, item scheduled for discussion, possible action. Approval, second reading, curriculum adoption, transitional kindergarten, high high scope, third edition, twenty sixteen. Ms. Dixon?
Thank you, President Martin. We are bringing this uh curriculum adoption back for second reading and hopeful approval this evening. At our previous board meeting, um Ms. West, our early education TOSA presented a comprehensive overview of the curriculum. We have had the curriculum on public display since that time in the curriculum department. We haven't really had anyone come in to see it, but it's been available for those who are interested. Um pending your approval this evening, we have a robust professional learning um series of uh sessions scheduled for our TK teachers to implement the curriculum for the next school year that we're very excited about. So I'm happy to take any questions that you may have at this time.
Are there any questions from the board for Ms. Dixon on this item? Seeing none, I'm going to open it up to public comment from our audience. Anyone in the audience want to speak on the TK adoption? Seeing none, I'd like to adopt a TK. No, just kidding.
They're pretty cute.
Bring it back to the board for comment. Anyone? All right, this is our second reading, so I do need approval this going round for item number seventeen.
Move approval, second reading, curriculum adoption, transitional transitional kindergarten, high scope, third edition, twenty sixteen.
Second. It's been moved by Stewart, second by Santos to approve item number seventeen. Roll roll call vote, please. Stewart?
Aye.
Santos?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes.
Naomi Bernier?
Yes.
Kendell?
Yes.
Martin? Yes. Motion passes six, zero.
Item number eighteen, approval, transportation fee schedule for school year twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five. Mr. Eichberger?
Thank you, President Martin. Uh the item before you today is in accordance with our administrative regulation three, five, four, one, and ultimately is setting our transportation rates for our school year, our twenty-four, twenty-five school year. This is actually um our goal is to continue the current transportation fee schedule that we have for uh the twenty-three, twenty-four school year. So just a continuation of the same fees.
Well, that's hard to argue with. Is there any questions for Mr. Eichberger on this item? Okay, seeing no questions, I'm going to open it up to public comment. Anyone from the audience like to speak on this item, transportation fees? Seeing none, I'm going to close it to public comment, bring it back to the board for comment. Mr. Stewart?
Just a quick one. Thank you. I mean, I think I know there's great pressure, uh financial pressure on the system as well, but anything we can do to help our families is great. We appreciate it.
Okay, uh before I take a motion, um I'd like to note that Ms. Bernier left at eight fifteen. And now I'm looking for a motion for item number eighteen. We will approve a transportation fee schedule for the school year two thousand twenty-four, two thousand twenty-five. Second. It's been moved by Santos, second by Ms. Mayor to approve item number eighteen. Roll call vote, please. Santos?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes.
Kendell?
Yes.
Stewart?
Aye.
Martin? Yes. Uh motion passes five, zero.
Item number nineteen, approval, exclusive negotiation agreement for land donation to Luciemar Unified School District. Mr. Fossett, before you start, I'd like to make a correction in the item. Did you get that?
I did, yes.
Okay, great.
Yep. So and just to note too, the um updated document is in your folders and there's also extra copies in the back of the room on the table to have the exclusive negotiations agreement. So um the Dana Reserve LLC is seeking the development approvals from the County of San Luis Obispo for mixed-use development within the district's boundaries. The project will include approximately thirteen hundred new residential units, uh roughly two hundred thousand square feet of commercial development and various project enhancements. The board previously approved a mitigation agreement with the developer to mitigate the school facilities impacts on the district from the development. As a separate part of the development, the developer is proposing to develop an area known as NBD ten A within the project to to provide um low-income housing. The developer is proposing to donate the NBD ten A property to the district. If it's donated, the district would lease the property to People's Self-Help Housing um for a period of fifty-five years and People's Self-Help Hou- Housing would construct eighty-four multifamily housing units on the property and turn around and rent those properties to persons qualifying under low-income housing requirements. As part of the development, People's Self-Help Housing would provide priority housing to district employees first. Um this exclusive negotiation agreement provides that if the developer receives all of the development entitlements for the project, there will be a hundred and eighty-day negotiation time period for the district and People's Self-Help Housing to reach an agreement regarding the terms, the development and operation of NBD ten A. The district will have no obligation to pay for any of the costs of construction of the dwelling units in NBD ten A or to pay any of the costs associated with the operations, management or maintenance of the low-income housing development. The district believes it is in the district's best interest to attempt to negotiate acceptable terms to provide low-income housing for district employees. Um it's recommended that the board approve this exclusive negotiation agreement with the Dana Reserve this evening. I'm here to answer any questions you may have.
Questions by anyone on the board? The question I alluded to was about the legal counsel on the second one is the developer, not the district.
We have that updated and that will be um shared before it's uh fully executed by both parties.
And this is not approval of the project, this is approval of a mitigation agreement if the project gets built.
This is not an endorsement of the project. This is simply the district um caring for its interests and caring for its people so that we can recruit and retain employees.
Great. Any questions from the board? Seeing none, I'm going to open it up to public comment. Um this is for public comment on item number twenty. Nineteen, excuse me, approval, exclusive negotiation agreement for land donation to Luciemar Unified School District. Would anyone like to comment on item number nineteen? Seeing no movement in the audience, I'm going to close it to public comment for item number nineteen and bring it back to the board for comment. On the board, want to make a comment on this? I realize we've discussed this before. It's been proposed. We've had public comment on it before. Anyone? Okay, then I'll accept the motion. I move approval, exclusive negotiation agreement for the land donation to Luciemar Unified School District.
Second.
It's been moved by Santos, second by Stewart. Roll call vote, please. Santos?
Yes.
Stewart?
Aye.
Kendell?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes.
Martin? Yes. Motion passes five, zero.
Moving on to item number twenty, first reading, revision of board policy, administrative regulations and exhibits. Dr. Fossett?
Thank you, President Martin. This is the first reading of the revisions to board policies, administrative regulations and exhibits and bylaws. Um before you tonight, we have some um board policies pertaining to uniform complaint procedures, employee notifications, um probationary and permanent status, um employee notifications, management of district assets and accounts, uh complaint or complaints concerning instructional materials, um Williams Uniform Complaint Procedures, uh and let's see if there's any, and will and and employee status reports. So um before you tonight, um it's recommended that you um review these and if you have any questions, I'm here to answer them. Um there's no recommendation for motion on this item.
Any questions from the board on these updated revisions to policies? Item number twenty-one. Seeing none, I'm going to open it up to public comment from the audience. Anyone in the audience want to speak on item twenty-one? Seeing no movement, I'm going to close public comment, bring it back to the board for comment. Item number twenty, excuse me, this is a first reading. We usually don't vote on a first reading. We usually like it to come back the second time. One ahead here tonight.
We reversed the order on you.
Yeah. Okay, we're going to move on to item number twenty-one, which is also updated policies. Dr. Fossett?
And this is the second reading. Um and it is before you tonight for your consideration as an action item. Um and the items that you reviewed last time are complaints concerning instructional materials, courses study. Um and it's my recommendation that um because this is the second review that you approve these tonight.
Questions for Dr. Fossett on these items? This is our second reading. Okay, I'm going to open it up for public comment on item number twenty-one. Policy updates. Seeing no movement, I'm going to close the public comment, bring it back to the board for comment. I do have a comment. First off, so sleepy last night. I didn't realize I was like dying. Anyways, I did go through these with a fine tooth and a red pen. Um so the policy one thirty-one, two point two, complaints concerning instructional materials, it's very timely because it does include library resources. So um I read that very intently. Um which I really wanted to show, share with the board, one of the lines in here that I thought was really great. It said, "The district shall accept complaints concerning instructional materials only from staff, district residents, or the parents, guardians of children enrolled in a district school." So someone from back east can't send us in a complaint that they're sending to every school in the nation and we have to deal with it. So that was well-placed. I like that. I also like the fact that yes, you can appeal, you know, you can have the superintendent designate me, have a committee and review things. But and they can appeal it to the board, but once the board decides it, it's final. It's over. There's no more appealing. So I thought those were wonderful decisions that were in our policy. Um on the bottom of the second page, it said the board's decision shall be final. And I was very happy with that because some things in our school district can be appealed to the county board and then they don't understand what we're doing here. And the other thing at the top of the page, well, uh the form that we've created, which I really like, at the top it says anonymous complaints will not be accepted. Way to go. So I was very happy with this whole section. Thought it was very good. So. Was it eye-opening then? It was. Eye-opening, Ms. Santos. Yes. Uh anyone else have comments on this second? This is a second reading, so we will be voting on this tonight. Oh, okay. So I'm looking for approval.
Move approval, second reading, revision of board policies, administrative regulations and exhibits.
Second. It's been moved by Stewart, second by Mayor to approve second reading, revision of board policies, administrative regulations and exhibits, item number twenty-one. Roll call vote, please. Stewart?
Aye.
Mayor?
Yes.
Kendell?
Yes.
Santos?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes. Item passes five, zero.
And now we come to student discipline, Ms. Kendell. It's bad.
I would like to move uh agreements and stipulations for immediate expulsion with suspended enforcement. The Board of Education finds there is cause to expel from all schools in the district student case number two-three dash two-four dash zero-three-five for violation of Education Code Section four-eight-nine-zero-zero-C and student case number two-three dash two-four dash two-three-six, I'm sorry, zero-three-six for violation of Education Code Section four-eight-nine-zero-zero-eight-one. It is further moved that the board adopt the recitals, agreements, rehabilitation plans and readmission review dates as set forth in the March twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-four and April tenth, twenty twenty-four. Agreements and stipulation for immediate expulsion and suspension of expulsion.
Second. It's been moved by Kendell, second by Santos. Roll call vote, please. Kendell?
Yes.
Santos?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes.
Stewart?
Aye.
Martin? Yes. Motion passes five, zero.
Uh I would like to move agreement and stipulation for immediate expulsion. The Board of Trustees finds there is cause to expel student case number two-three dash two-four dash zero-three-seven from all schools in the district for violation of Education Code Sections four-eight-nine-zero-zero-point-seven and four-eight-nine-zero-zero-eight-one and four-eight-nine-zero-zero-R and four-eight-nine-zero-zero dot four. It is further moved that the board adopt the recitals, agreements, rehabilitation plan and readmissions, readmission review date as set forth in the April fifteenth, twenty twenty-four agreement and stipulation for immediate expulsion.
Second. It's been moved by Kendell, second by Santos. Roll call vote, please. Kendell?
Yes.
Santos?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes.
Stewart?
Aye.
Martin? Yes. Motion passes five, zero.
We move on to public comment on items not on the agenda. I received a blue speaker card from Anthony Chavez. Please come to the mic. The item for comment says CSA president. Yes, I do know. And you look very dapper in your blue.
Hello, everybody. My name is Anthony Chavez. I am the CSA chapter president. Very nice to be here tonight. I wanted to say thank you to the school board and to the panel here for letting me speak. Sitting here, just kind of hearing all the good stuff about the classified and the teachers and, you know, together we are Team Luciemar. And uh I'm proud to be Team Luciemar and humbled to be the president of our chapter. I'm also a proud dad of a senior here at the work at Grandi High School who's going to be graduating this year. And uh wow, time just flies, you know, and we're a family here at Luciemar. I've always considered everybody here a family member with me as well, too. And I've been here close to eighteen years now and I've seen a lot of change in our chapter, in our district, personnel and staff members and, you know, I'm very proud of where we're at right now. One thing I want to say about uh I'm super happy with is the 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 negotiations that we're in right now. We have started negotiation and I'm proud to say that we have actually hit tentative agreement on a few topics and we've still got a little ways to go. But you know, I'm um pretty proud of my negotiation, of our negotiation team on lis- pretty proud of my negotiation, of our negotiation team on listening to our members and making certain that their voices are heard. And every single one of our chapter members that are involved with our meetings, um, you know, one thing with the chapter meeting, we have moved to hybrid chapter meetings now. And so our attendance at our meeting is uh, excelling exponentially. And everybody knows that they have a voice and we are here to help them. And with our negotiation team, you know, I'm very proud of every single one of the members that we have, all of our our representatives in every department. Um, I'll keep this real short. You know, um, they're all doing a fantastic job and listening to every single one of the departments and it's, it's nice to see this happening. As chapter president, I have to actually sit to the side and watch them all do all the work and vote and make certain that things have passed. And um, that was different because last year I was actually the rep for the special services. And this year, you know, moving to the president's spot, uh, I nominated actually Chris Ryan to be the special services representative and they're all doing a fantastic job here. So I am, I'm thinking that, you know, we're going to find a common ground soon. And um, you know, together we are Team Luciemar. So thank you very much. Have a good night.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience who would like to speak under public comments on items not on the agenda? Seeing no movement, um, I'm going to bring this meeting to a close, to a close for adjournment from my fancy gavel from 2010. This means adjourn.